Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August fourteenth meeting of the East Temple Township Planning Commission. Please join me in opening the meeting with a pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get to our action items this evening, we need to take up the minutes from the July tenth meeting. Even even though I wasn't there, I think I've got a couple corrections. Uh, under voting members, I think it was Mr. Rush, not Mrs. Rush. And I also think, uh, probably Mr. Detter joined the meeting instead of Mr. Fullerton.
I was channeling you.
That's that copy paste there. It's second time. Every time I'm away, it's the same.
I'll get those fixed.
Are there any other questions, corrections, or additions? If not, I'm ready for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as printed with the corrections noted.
Okay, second.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Byrne, second by Mr. Caldas, that we approve the minutes of the July tenth meeting as with the two changes noted this evening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? I will abstain due to absence. So it's. Stacy, did you vote? I didn't hear.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't there.
Okay, so and by the way, one, two, three, four, five, both of you guys will be voting members this evening.
Just in the nick of time.
Yes. Make note that. Uh, so it was.
Two?
I'm not sure if my voted.
What's that? Or we missed a vote?
Well, just, well, he'll abstain.
Abstain.
So it was four zero three. All right, the action item is thirty-three twenty-one Columbia Avenue, Columbia Plan at view.
Good evening. My name is Chris Van Archik with RGS Associates. I'm joined tonight by representatives of the applicant Dutchland Realty Holding Corp. Here this evening to talk to you about thirty-three twenty-one Columbia Avenue. I'll start off by just giving a brief background on the project. Get more detailed about the proposed program with the project and then where we stand in terms of our review cycle for the project. So site introduction, you can see that up there on the screen. It is again at thirty-three twenty-one Columbia Avenue. It's on the north side of Columbia Avenue. So that'd be plan that you're seeing to the left or Plan West. The lot is about seventeen acres in size. The zone, the zoning is CBC, the Community Business Center Zone. In terms of its surroundings, you have enterprise to the north and west, medium density residential to the east, and then Manor Township on the south side of the project on the other side of Columbia Avenue. The existing property is primarily wooded and it was a former nursery. Proposed project that we're looking at is a number of uses proposed on the site. One is a place of worship. One is a lodging or an overnight accommodation use or essentially a hotel. Multi-family apartments of which forty-five units are proposed. Single-family semi-detached duplexes at twenty units. And then self-storage with a total square footage with all buildings of about forty-three thousand five hundred square feet. You can see with the site layout that we're showing up there, you have the primary access coming in off of Columbia Avenue into the site. It is via a private street that would be thirty feet wide. There is also an emergency access shown there, again, on the left side of the plan that you're looking at out to Richardson Avenue. And then we do have a cul-de-sac for a turnaround. Duplexes are situated, I'll just say on the plan we're looking at Plan North along the existing residential. And then you have apartments situated there along Columbia Avenue. The hotel and place of worship are more central there on the site, the hotel being the more, I'll call it northern. And then the place of worship on the southern, again, plan view that you're looking at there. Self-storage are those long linear buildings there, I'll say southeast plan view of the site. Overall density of the project, the max allowed by the ordinance is four dwelling units per acre. This plan comes in at under that maximum, maximum acre or dwelling units per acre. As far as traffic for the project, a traffic impact study has been prepared, was reviewed. We've also had with Columbia Avenue being a state highway, there is an HOP that's in process. PennDOT has already reviewed that traffic impact study and the HOP is in its review cycle with PennDOT. As far as stormwater management, the site essentially drains from Columbia Avenue to the left or to Plan West. There are existing environmental features, wetlands in that area, and that's one of the primary reasons why we looked at doing an emergency access to minimize any kind of impact to that existing wetland area. And then in the proposed conditions, try to basically match that existing drainage pattern to the, I'll call it again, Plan West by introducing two separate surface detention facilities. As far as NPDS, obviously over an acre of disturbance on the property, so we do have to submit for an NPDS permit that's been submitted and we already have been through a review cycle and we'll be re-submitting that plan this week to the Conservation District. Water supplied by City of Lancaster, they've already actually reviewed the plan and have offered their approval of the plan as designed. And sewer supplied by LASSA, or the Lancaster Area Sewer Authority, and we have a review with very few comments on that cycle. That will be resubmitting back to that agency. So big picture of why we're here this evening is we're seeking a recommendation on to approve the preliminary plan that you see before you, the associated parking and associated modifications. We do have the latest Township Engineer letter review dated eight nine twenty-four. And we have the modifications that I'm happy to walk through, item by item or modification by modification if you'd like. And of course, answer any questions you have about the project, but that's essentially a high-level overview of the plan.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Um, I guess, uh, maybe we'll take general questions at this point before we get into the modifications. So if any commissioners have questions or like more information on any aspect of the project, now would be the time.
I have one question. Where is the, I cannot tell by looking at your drawing, where is the access to the storage units?
It was on. At the cul-de-sac.
Difficult to see right there.
Right to the back.
And there's also an access point right here.
Right by the hotel. Right there.
Okay, at the cul-de-sac.
It's from the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, so there's access here. And there's also secondary access here. And that would be fenced in.
And how many units are we talking?
Uh, storage units?
Yes.
Guess that would vary. Total square footage is about forty-three thousand five hundred, so I guess it depends.
I know they're, I know they're movable, but.
Uh, has that been programmed out?
If we go maybe like an average of a if it was a hundred square feet, I think it would be, um, what's the map? Four hundred.
Four hundred.
Yeah.
If they're all hundred square foot, but some will be bigger than that.
I'm just concerned about people bringing in trailers and motorhomes coming past all those houses and going down that one sign. It's just, it's not something I'd want in my backyard.
Yeah, fair point. It is something you sometimes do see in storage areas. In this case, we're not showing any storage area for that outdoor storage.
There's going to be no motorhome storage there at all.
No outdoor storage.
Okay.
Yeah, so the parking you see is just guests or visitor or patron parking, if you will, but it's not for long-term storage.
At like an office area.
When I took a look at this through Google Maps or whatever, um, it appeared that there was maybe a lane or something on the west side of the property, south, the bottom side of your drawing that might come from the auto dealership or somewhere down there. Is there something there? It kind of looked just along the property line, couldn't tell where where it was, but there was a clearing.
Not that I see on our survey, along that, not that I see on our surveys. You'd be talking about like Plan South or the west side of the site.
Yeah.
There's that warehouse there on the adjoining property. But survey did not pick up any type of drive or anything.
Okay. And then along that, that same area from that warehouse, is there an easement or something there? It looks like water comes out from the warehouse and goes through your properties?
Yes, good question. So the existing stormwater management condition is the site again drains to, I'll call it, we'll just refer to it as Plan West. And that kind of curves down to where Richardson Avenue is or Richardson Drive. And there is basically a collection of that water that runs along a channel and then, believe it or not, goes under the warehouse.
Under, so it's actually coming from the north down to the warehouse and then underneath through from here?
Yeah, there's a convergence of drains, but when you're looking specifically on the, the subject tract from Columbia Avenue, that kind of just sheet flows across the site and again, kind of starts to concentrate that, I'll call it southwest corner. And then there's an existing channel there that takes it underneath, underneath the warehouse. So in our post-development design, we demonstrated how we're restricting that rate and volume to its pre-development condition or no more than its pre-development condition to make sure we're not causing a problem there.
Flat out the, flat out the warehouse, yeah, okay. I was thinking it was the other way, going towards your containment area.
I had a couple questions, um, related to two topics, parking and the apartments in specific, are they intended to be two or three-bedroom apartments? What size apartments are they intended to be? And, um, how the calculation for one point two seven parking spaces per apartment was calculated? Uh, just to confirm that, you know, are they going to be numbered designated spaces to prevent people from having company and taking other people's spaces? It's very tight on parking from an apartment standpoint. And then my second question would be related to lighting, um, and the proposal for lighting of the storage facility and the, uh, hotel area parking.
So to start with apartments, again, forty-five dwelling units proposed for the multifamily. Uh, the required parking would be fifty-eight spaces, proposed for the site is sixty-three, and of that sixty-three, twenty-three are garage spaces in the apartment buildings. The calculation was based off the ITE, so we looked at the use being, um, the categories number two twenty, multifamily housing, low-rise. And that's how we come up with that one point two seven directly from the ITE manual to assign that parking. As far as number of bedrooms, I'm not sure.
I think most are going to need one bedroom.
Okay.
So we're not, um, it's, those are pretty tight for prints, so that's not really going to be enough to put a lot of bedroom. I think the corner units could be two bedrooms, so, you know, with three-story apartments, you know, maybe like fifteen would be two bedrooms, but the forty-five, like of the, mostly units is going to be thirty-five and thirty or so single bedrooms, maybe like a den. Uh, we're trying to target like a fifty-five, most how.
Does, does the private street have on-street parking available or no?
It's a thirty-foot width, so it has the width to accommodate that. I don't think, I believe we may have one side, maybe restricted on one. Yeah, it looks like our plan calls out some signage to restrict parking to one side.
Okay.
I think there was a question, I don't know, if spaces will be numbered for the apartments?
And the other question was related to lighting and your proposal for, uh, is it dusk to dawn? What type of lighting are we talking for the storage units and parking facilities related to the, the, the hotel and the, uh, worship center?
I know we worked with a lighting vendor for the parking lots for that, that lighting. As far as specifically the, um, storage, I'm not sure about.
Yeah. I think for the most part, you know, the temple's not going to be used, you know, past like seventy, like I'd say ninety, ninety-five percent of the lights. So I, I, I would assume they would just cut off early, um, if that's reasonable. Post-sell storage, I guess with security and camp, it was more, I think somewhat well.
Thank you. Okay, then I guess we'll go back and go through the modifications, please. And I'd ask the commission members if there's any questions as each item is reviewed to ask them at that time, so that we don't have to go back to rehash.
Would you like me to just walk through each one?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'll refer to probably what's easiest is the August ninth letter from DMA.
Right.
So on page one, uh, the first modification has to do with the planting buffers. So probably in talking about modification number one and modification number two, they're both related to buffers. Essentially, the request we're making is there's buffer requirements around the perimeter of the property. As I stated, when we first kind of talked about the existing condition out there, it was a nursery, so there's a lot of vegetation out on the site. And what our modification request is to have the ability to, at the time construction takes place, when we're in there doing the removal of the existing vegetation to accommodate the proposed site plan, that we believe that there'll probably be a significant amount of existing vegetation remaining at the perimeter. So we're simply saying that, um, I think it's recommended in the letter from DMA, both being granted with conditions and the conditions being at the time of construction, doing an evaluation to determine whether or not additional plantings are required in addition to what remains in the existing condition. So we're certainly not opposed to the buffer. We, we want the buffer. Uh, we're simply saying at this time, it, it just seems premature to show a bunch of proposed landscaping that may not even be necessary to achieve the buffer that the ordinance wants. Um, so we're, we're in agreement with the idea of evaluating that and we did provide a, a plan that in the event you do need to, to do that landscaping, there is a plan to rely on. It's not like we'll just wing it at that time. We have a plan to rely on to say, okay, this is what needs to be implemented if in fact the existing vegetation is not sufficient.
So I, I guess my question would be on the lower side, west side. It's a fifteen-foot planning or buffer. With everything that's going on along that south side, I assume there's a good bit of grading there to get the water around the storage unit from when I looked at the topos. Is there still going to be room to put a buffer in that doesn't interfere with the the drainage easement? Because once that, all that macadam is in around the storage units, I'm sure you're not going to tear it out and move it.
And the goal is to minimize disturbance as much as possible. Again, I'm looking at that plan I referenced. Um, so it was an exhibit that was provided landscape buffer and planting strip exhibit. So we show a pretty healthy buffer along that, I'll call it south side. If necessary, but our goal would be to again minimize disturbance, retain as much vegetation as possible because yeah, the existing vegetation there, it's, in our opinion, provides, you know, a nice, just kind of screening as much as we can. So rather than clear cutting it, we're going to try to, you know, keep as much as we can.
Let me, let me just scroll down to that drawing I was looking at so I can reference what you're saying. How in the world, how far is this?
If it's, if it's help, I could.
LD seven.
But it's a separate exhibit.
LD seven, thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
That's the buffer plan. I was looking at the grading.
Okay, again, I was looking at.
We're looking at this one, the grading plan.
Probably, yeah.
So this is all the existing trees that are here.
That easements right in this vicinity. You're just going to plan in that easement?
Yeah, this is be graded. That's probably twenty feet through twenty. I don't know what scale this is at. What's the scale? Find the graphic scale.
So in the question about the grading on, um, LD seven, on that sheet, we do show the limits of that grading. And you can see there's a good bit of existing vegetation to remain on that, on that, called west side or south side.
Okay, I just am concerned you've got some pretty close grade lines there, starting at that vegetation up to your macadam. And I don't know.
What's coming down?
LD seven?
Well, it's on LD seven. Yeah, we were just looking at the grading plan through there. Yeah.
So perhaps, um, let's see, this condition was so when, when is this going to be looked at to decide whether it's okay or not?
But I think they referenced during construction, uh,
That's what.
After site clearing.
Okay.
So, okay, again, the idea being that, once we do the site clearing, we'll be and try to retain as much vegetation as possible at that time. Coordinating with the township to say, hey, let's do a visual inspection of what remains. If it's felt that it's insufficient, we'll then defer to the, the landscape plan. If we feel it's sufficient to achieve the buffer, then, you know, kind of checks that box of the condition.
Yeah, I, I would just want to make sure we do the township and everybody takes a look at it early enough. So that it can be planned for rather than to come back later on and say, oh, we can't do it because whatever.
Yep, absolutely. And the condition that is indicated to your point, it does have when it's supposed to occur, being after site clearing, but then it also has a time limitation that it can't, you can't have a year go by and then suddenly, you know, check on it. So in that condition, of course, it will be on the plan that's recorded. Before I get for items number one and two or modifications one and two, being very similar tied to the buffers, we don't have any concerns addressing that, uh, condition. Uh, modification three is really just a geometric thing. It's for the layout of the parking lot. Your ordinance states that parking islands are to be across from each other. And, you know, in a perfect world, you can achieve that in most cases, but in this case, we're just asking some, some relief around, immediately around the building. Um, and the township engineers again recommending that be granted. So we're providing the islands, they're just not exactly across from each other. And really, it's just trying to, trying to avoid, um, more like larger spaces than necessary. Number four, um, relates to planting islands, again with shade trees. We're requesting, uh, areas where there are easement conflicts, the planning of, with those plantings. So again, the township engineer offered that, that be granted with the condition that if we have to plant a tree in an island and you can't do it because of an easement conflict, that we simply just take that tree that's required and put it somewhere else on site. So again, we're, we're fine with that.
Does that drawing that they're showing up there include the relocated trees?
That's just an illustrative plan, so I don't, I wouldn't say that that's exactly the, the location. It's probably generated from our black and white plan, but I just always like to say that's, you know, artist illustration of the site plan. It's more for, you know, jewel. But that quantity would be, takes it. So if the tree is required, it will be on the site. Number five has to do with cul-de-sac length, um, having a minimum length of two-fifty, but not more than six hundred feet. In this case, you can see due to the, the nature of the site, um, the limited, very limited street frontage along Columbia Avenue, the site is served by a cul-de-sac. It is again a private street, not a public street. The length that we have shown there is one thousand sixty-five feet, so we're looking for relief to allow that length. Uh, the condition, of course, uh, was that emergency services be okay with that scenario. And we've had a lot of coordination with uh, the emergency services group, um, and the township engineer from the standpoint of reviewing it from emergency, um, flow. That was Bowman, your traffic engineer. So again, they note there it'd be granted with the condition that those two parties be satisfied. We do have, I think I have the latest letter from the township. There are a few conditions they had in there about quantity of fire hydrants, um, and some details with regard to the emergency access restriction. But again, we have no objection to, to meeting those conditions. Number six is a one-hundred-foot clear-site triangle. This is at the entrance to the site along Columbia Avenue. I mentioned the narrow lot frontage we have on this parcel, so very restrictive. And that access drive, I mean, right where we show it's about the only place it can be. Um, and there's been dialogue with immediate, uh, property owner to, I'll call it the south, Plan South of that drive. And we've worked out that we, we provide a seventy-five-foot clear-site triangle and that, we, we provided the safe site stopping distance information to meet PennDOT criteria, so we feel it's a safe condition with that reduced clear-site triangle. Again, the township engineer recommends that that be granted. Number seven relates to the installation of sidewalk. We're looking for a modification to allow, instead of a typical concrete sidewalk along the street, in this case, again, being a private street, we wanted to have something that's a little more multi-use, so we're proposing an eight-foot-wide asphalt path. Locate one foot inside the right-of-way for a portion of the site, so we did it everywhere we could. And again, the township engineer recommend that be granted. So again, instead of a standard concrete sidewalk each side of the street, we're looking at providing an asphalt path that's essentially functions like a sidewalk, but also could accommodate bikers as well. Number eight gets into the stormwater management ordinance, and that's essentially just, you know, we always find this situation where we're having to comply with the DEP regulations with their best practices manual. So that's essentially what we've done. We're using the MRC or Managed Release Concept for the stormwater design, which your township engineer has reviewed and is offering that that be granted. Number nine, um, is related to conveyance piping and having cover above stormwater pipes. So not uncommon to have this request. And when we do find out that situation, where to tie in our existing pipes to perimeter facilities and so forth, you might have situations where you don't have the full cover over the pipes. What we typically do is make sure we provide manufacturer specifications that the pipe will be sufficient in terms of handling any loads. Um, in this case, I believe the township engineer offered that, uh, the material of the pipe be RCP, which our plan would then reflect. So again, we don't have any concerns with meeting that condition. Number ten relates back to the cul-de-sac. Um, this has to do with maximum of two-hundred-and-fifty ADT or average daily trips uh, for residential development and a max of five-hundred ADT for non-residential. So we're looking for a modification of that requirement um, to allow up to nine-hundred-and-eighty. And they again reference in the granting of the modification that again, as long as the EMS and emergency services are okay with that, which again, they have reviewed the plan multiple times and offered their latest letter on that. Number eleven, very similar to one of the other ones I just mentioned, was related to sidewalks being within the urban growth area, sidewalks being on both sides. Um, in this case, we're looking for the asphalt sidewalk to be on both sides of the proposed street, except for a portion of the private street where the asphalt sidewalk is only proposed on one side. So this is specific to having the sidewalk on, on both sides. Um, it does note there that the ordinance allows for a section of a proposed street to have sidewalk only on one side upon approval by the Board of Supervisors. So, and the township engineer offers that to be granted. Number twelve, um, has to do with existing vegetation on the site. I think I mentioned that it was formerly a nursery, so there were lots of plants out there. So rather than surveying every single tree out there, it's really, it's impossible. So again, they're just offering that it be monitored during site clearing. And we're looking at any of the remaining vegetation, you know, be inspected after the site clearing and within one year of construction, uh, from the zoning permit date. Again, we don't have a problem with that condition. Thirteen is street trees. Uh, we're requesting waiver of the requirement to plant street trees for a portion of the private street. Again, so it's not along the entire length. There are some areas where it just doesn't fit, so, um, they basically note in the review, the township engineer, that, um, it has to do with the required buffer strip that they recommend granting the modification.
Can you point that on in the drawing?
They reference the Hain property, which is down around this area here.
So is it okay for Scott to review this?
Sorry?
Is it okay for Scott to review this plan? Scott Hain?
I don't know. I don't think they're related.
Oh, really?
I asked him that question.
Okay.
I did, yeah. I didn't quite get to know. Yeah, I remember asking him, wait a minute, Hain?
Yep.
Fourteen, I think. Fourteen and exist, existing vegetation has to do with the buffers. Again, really, this kind of goes back to the first and second that we talked about when we went down the list. Essentially the same exact condition that when the site clearing is done, that it be evaluated to make sure there's sufficient vegetation buffers remaining. Fifteen ties back to one of the other ones, very similar about the average trips per day. Now, this is tied to having two separate distinct means of access. As I pointed out, given the, the narrow lot frontage along Columbia Avenue, we are really restricted to having the primary access that's shown there. But again, the relief that we have the emergency access going out the back to Richardson Drive. So that's what's referenced in the letter there. And it's recommended being granted with conditions that the emergency access again be approved by the emergency services. And last one is sixteen, and very similar with just some of the language in the ordinance. Some of these are kind of repeats, but it has to do with for residential subdivisions or land developments to generate more than one hundred average daily trips, but less than five hundred, providing two or more points of access into the development. So again, we have the emergency access and the primary entrance is a private street. We do provide the cul-de-sac and it has been reviewed by emergency services. So it was a very quick rundown. If there's anyone that's specific that you have a question about, I'll just try to answer that for you.
Real quick question, the emergency access, will it be, have any kind of gate, chain link fence, anything like that? And who will be responsible to, or what mechanism will make sure that it's plowed?
A good question. So the emergency services letter that we received dated July thirtieth, in that letter, they did provide specifically what they, what they want. So it would be basically two posts and then a swinging gate with an, I think they call it Knox, yeah Knox box that emergency services would be able to obviously utilize. As far as payment, I would believe it'd be on the, the landowner to make sure that's clear on their own property. Correct.
Yeah, I think there's going to be a condo association, so that'll be added. I'm, I'm looking at almost as like a walking path as well, so
I assume school buses can make the cul-de-sac, right?
Don't recall. It's a great question.
Do you think we should have a turning pattern on it to make sure?
It's a standard township cul-de-sac.
Okay.
So.
No, it has to be okay.
Admit the movements for a fire truck, so.
Yeah, school bus are to handle that, okay. All right. Nate, is there anybody on Zoom?
No, there isn't.
No, okay.
Can I ask a couple of general questions?
Sure.
Sorry, I didn't have them earlier. What kind of boundary is in between this property and the two properties and to the front towards Columbia Avenue?
The boundary?
Yeah, so is there a fence? Is it just greenery? I mean, I know there's a lot of trees back there. But, so the, what I'm getting at is you have right next to Dutch Valley, there's that house with the apartments and the garage behind it. Is this lower building in the, to the bottom right? That's the church, right?
Right.
So you have inevitably a lot of people that are driving in, or perhaps if someone in one of those properties wants to walk there. Do they have to walk along Columbia Avenue or can they walk directly through their backyard to get there?
Well, I, I suppose from a trespassing standpoint, we wouldn't encourage people walking across those properties.
Right.
But we do have the, the sidewalks provided on the private drive out to Columbia. So someone can, can come into the site and then work their way down to the, the place of worship.
So on the flip side of that, I'm also thinking with a hotel there as well, from a security standpoint of the existing homeowners, is there some sort of physical boundary that is going to keep people from, you know, if a hotel guest wants to go for a walk, that's going to prevent them from walking on to the other properties as well?
There is a retaining wall there, so that does provide, I would say somewhat of a challenge or a barrier to making that movement through the back of those properties. You can see that graphic. I guess I'll do it over here. So that line, that thick line right there is a retaining wall.
Okay, great. Yeah, because the whole thing slopes down. Right. One would help, yeah. No, I don't think so either, but worst-case scenario.
Behind of that wall, it will also have a railing across that.
Yeah.
Okay, great. We don't want it to be an attractive nuisance either.
Any other questions, anybody? Okay, then first we'll take action on the modifications, all sixteen of them. I believe there are two, four, six, eight, ten that have conditions attached and six that do not. So we, we could take them as one, one group or two groups, however you want to do it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval, modification waiver requests three, six through eight, ten, eleven, and thirteen and conditional approval for requests one, two, four, five, nine, twelve, fourteen through sixteen for the thirty-three twenty-one Columbia Avenue project.
I would make.
Subject to all staff and engineering comments.
I have a question on number ten. Number ten says it should be conditional, I believe, and not granted straight.
Yes, it should.
Yeah. So if you'll change ten to conditional instead of random?
You want me to restate it?
No. Ten, ten is conditional instead of.
Well, okay. Ten is a conditional recommendation rather than waiver request.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion. Okay, we have motion by Mr. Volpe, seconded by Mr. Deeter, that we recommend conditional approval of modifications one, two, four, five, nine, ten, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and straight approval of modifications three, six, seven, eight, eleven, and thirteen, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? So that would be unanimous. Then the preliminary plan itself.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, we recommend approval of the preliminary plan for thirteen, thirty-three twenty-one Columbia Avenue project, subject to all staff and engineering comments.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Byrne, seconded by Mr. Caldis. Do we recommend approval of the preliminary plan for thirty-three twenty-one Columbia Avenue project, subject to staff and engineer comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That will be unanimous.
Question, is it customary that the planning commission is also making recommendations separately for the parking? Since the board has to approve the parking, or is that just kind of wrapped into the overall plan?
The overall plan.
Overall plan, okay.
In, in what way, Chris? What, what is your question?
There's a note in the review from the DMA letter, which of course, I guess you tied to the approval. But I know some townships do like to take a separate action on the parking because it is saying that the township has to specifically act on the parking, making sure that they find it acceptable. So I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, well, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Have a good evening. Were there any questions for Nate regarding his project update? The August project update? Nate, I was just kind of curious, maybe it's been talked about before, the Lether property, where they're, they're taking the next property to it. Twenty sixteen is the, is the adjoining property to the existing lumberyard.
Yeah.
Looks like there's still one or two more in that little area between Wood and Church Street. I'm just kind of curious, are they going to just move a fence over there now after they tear the house down? Look, look on Google, Google Maps. Just type in twenty sixteen Church Street, you'll see it.
If it catches up.
Oh, this one?
I thought so.
These are already all losing.
It really doesn't want to show that.
Okay. I thought Google Maps worked on your computer.
It usually does. It just says, uh, your screen share is loading and it's stuck.
Well, it, and I haven't driven back actually in that area. But I'm kind of curious how they harden that off. Because, you know, Wood Street theoretically goes right through the lumberyard, but usually they would have it gated off at the east side. Twenty sixteen is the one gray house in the middle.
You're the one right beside the.
Yeah.
Right there.
That's why I'm wondering if it's been, if it's been, but these people have access to it now.
That's true.
And I don't, and I don't see where it would be fenced off coming down from Church Street on Wood Street there.
And I, I don't think, I don't think this is restricted. I know some of these, I think someone lives here still, they're working on putting a driveway out to church because this is just tough to.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious about how that all works as far as Lether's security too. They would, somebody could drive into that Wood Street there and be anywhere in there. They're, they're locked. I really didn't see any gates there. So I'm, I'm just curious what, what the plans are. Hasn't come up in any discussions, I guess. Is Wood Street still township street or has it been vacated?
I'm not entirely sure, I'd have to look.
Maybe it's.
I guess I was surprised when I saw Wood Street here because I know there's Wood Street on the other side of Rurstown.
Yeah.
Or Rurstown Road, I should say.
Right over.
Does Lether own those, those houses?
It's interesting here, they call it bear.
The only one they own is.
Wood and bear.
Oh, interesting. Well, yeah, that's what would, that would surprise me because I thought Wood Street could be parallel all the way across.
Yeah.
To where it used to.
To where it used to be connects, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, here.
Yeah.
Interesting. Yeah. Interesting.
Yeah, right, right behind the cemetery there. I didn't realize there was a cemetery back there too. Okay, any other superfluous questions?
I have a quick adjustment to the notes.
Oh, they already took care of that.
Oh, yeah, changed Mrs. to Mr. Rush.
We caught that.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
And I wasn't here to close the meeting either. I didn't adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
All right, there's nothing else to come before the commission, we are adjourned. See you next month.
Now you adjourned the meeting. Now you adjourned the meeting.
I know, but this one, yeah, he did.
Yeah, unless they keep me, I'll be back.
We're not going to do anything stupid.